Thank you for saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, was there any on the President's? Alright, I call for a motion accepted of consistent agenda items as submitted. Item one, except in the previous minutes. Item two, to approve the donations as listed. Item three, to approve the bid awards. Item four, to approve the district calendar revision. Item five, to adopt the 2020-2021 CDEP polls. Item six, to approve IEPs as submitted. Item seven, to approve fundraisers as listed. Item eight, to approve the private parochial transportation requests. We are going to hold off on item nine and then item 10 to approve the resolution for sale of real property. So all those in favor accepting items one through eight and then number 10? Is there a motion to accept items one through eight and then number 10?
I'm sorry, we have to do one through eight because 10 has to come after number nine.
Okay, we'll just say one through eight.
So I'll move.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All abstaining, motion carries. Item nine, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the seeker resolution. I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'd like to direct the board clerk to initiate a roll call vote.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Falcucci?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Stago?
Yes.
Mr. Devo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
And Mr. Syrian?
Yes.
The seeker resolution is approved by roll call vote. The call for a motion to approve the resolution for the sale of real property.
So I'll move.
I'll second it. All those in favor please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All abstaining, motion carries. Alright, personnel items. I'd like to call for a motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. I'll make a motion. I'll second it. I'd like to separate items two, three, and 10. So all those then in favor accepting items one, four through nine, and 11 through 17, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All abstaining, motion carries. Alright, I'm going to turn over to Superintendent and Mr. Stack for items two, three, and 10.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you very much. Evening, I'd like to introduce Amanda Kerizowski. Amanda, sitting center there, Amanda's going to be taking over at Eric Road as a fifth grade teacher this school year. Welcome to you Amanda Kerizowski, congratulations. We also then have an F3, very special welcome again, also Eric Road, grade five. Kristen Hall, congratulations Kristen, fifth grade teacher, Eric Road, soon to be. Then on the far right-hand side we have Mr. Derek Martin. Derek is going to be our microcomputer coordinator and he's going to be assisting Mr. Hazel with our operations as well as Ms. Smith with the operations of technology this school year. Welcome, Mr. Martin. Thank you.
Alright, all those in favor then of accepting items three, four, and two, three, and 10, please say hi.
Hi.
Hi. All abstaining, motion carries. Congratulations and welcome to the faculty conference.
Just for the board, Ms. Smith, did you want to introduce?
Sure. Yeah. I just. Now that we have a fully fledged virtual program of the secondary students learning from home on alternate days, the demands of our technology staff and resources have increased well beyond the existing capacity. Families now require technical support with respect to troubleshooting student login credentials and connectivity to school resources. Families have requested over a thousand device loans of prombooks for hotspots for the start of this school year. Teachers require technical support with respect to existing hardware that is being used in new ways to support live streaming classes at the secondary level. And teachers also require support with new software that will be used to livestream. Derek Martin brings the exact set of skills our community and instructional staff need right now. His experience supporting a variety of remote learning technology solutions at the college level fits the sub-responsibilities for this position, Michael. Mr. Martin is a talented technician and an effective communicator to skills and leader role. Thank you very much for creating the position of microcomputer coordinator. We look forward to having Derek on our team.
Alright, extending committees then, our capital project committee.
I would just give one quick update, I know I gave a fairly lengthy one at the last meeting. The lights are up, the cranes were, the crane's busy all week, I don't know if everyone is up yet, but they were putting them up as of yesterday morning, last I saw, and it's very exciting, we're getting very, very close to the end of that, that project.
Do we know, did they get the lines on the track map?
No. We're not on the other thing.
Alright, policy committee.
We have a meeting coming up on the 16th of September.
Alright, there are two informational items, one is for early graduation is a really informational item, and then an asset grant informational item. Make sure you check those over. Presence report, we had a great meeting with the superintendents and board presidents of Niagara Orleans County the other night. We're working on having an early legislative breakfast come September, normally we would have that in January in preparation for budget season, but with the 20% reduction in state aid, we feel that it warrants having one now to have a little conversation about not just the 20% that was cut, but some of the items that were hit, you know, one being 3K that's never been touched before. You know, it's quite disturbing that that, it's gotten to that point, that that's where they're, they're drawing from. So we will, I will keep you apprised of that, it's going to be unfortunately just a board representative, there's your board presidents and superintendent, only unless one of our goals is possibly have it outside, we were saying we, we get a tent, have it outside, we could have maybe another person preach, school district would be represented there. Again, just general concern, I mean, districts have been hit pretty hard with budgetary reductions from the governor. We can only hope that the federal government comes to us money or that there is a, you know, the governor maybe withholds, accepts the withholding of 20% and goes to a smaller percentage, just because I know that a lot of districts are talking about the sustainability past the, the second half of the school year into the second half of the school year, it's just, it's going to be very hard to do. And that, there was also question with the governor wanting us to bring back sports, you're cutting our budgets, but now you're telling us to go ahead with sports and figure out a way of funding that. So, you know, mixed messages again from, from all of them. I'll turn it over to the superintendent, he can talk a little more about that then.
Happy to. The, as Mr. Stago said, it was a very productive meeting with the superintendents and board presidents, you know, that, that 20% reduction is something that as a, as a board here and myself and Allison, we'll certainly talk about in future meetings. I think we want to see if it, if it holds true in our next set of aid, and if that 20% is reduced without, let me say it that way, you know, we have some decisions to make, we probably have some decisions to make, particularly as the second semester, so for us it's a significant hit, and depending on how, what your aid ratio is certainly, you know, how much aid you get from New York State certainly, you know, determines how bad of a hit this is for us, and for our district it's a significant hit.
Alright, I will then turn it over fully to the superintendent for his report.
Well, if I could, I'd like to start with Mr. Hazel in the back, he was, he asked to put together a little something to show you what kind of a live looking will be for our students and teachers. Alright, Mr. Hazel, cheers.
Thank you. So, we are, we are in a situation where we have teachers in, a few more seconds, teachers in classroom, what's that? Do I need the mic? Teachers in classrooms and students both in classrooms at home, so we need a way to livestream the classes to these kiddos. These classes, particularly at the secondary level, have a teacher, they have a computer, typically a laptop of some sort, a Windows-based laptop, sorry Steve, there is a document camera that's connected to that and a projector, either projector on the cart or projector that's built into the wall and it's projecting onto a screen of some sort, that's the equipment that's in these rooms. At home or in the classroom, you've got students, the students are either in class and they've got their notebooks like usual, or they're at home, they have their own computer, they might have a borrowed Chromebook, they have internet access, they actually don't even need a Zoom account, they could simply use their Google account or just log in with their name. The neat thing about the system that we're going to be using is that it allows the teachers to approve everybody that joins, which is a good thing and that's what we want.
I just wanted to add, I mean, that was a very significant, I think, change add, we were only using Google Classroom before, the Zoom, how it was not very important for the host to have that control.
Yeah, yeah, the Zoom account is an industry, it's an enterprise system that's designed to, that's, Google meets, serves a variety of functions, but if you really want to lock down the security piece and with the planning time that we have, we went through. So, what I'm going to do real brief right now is the following, I'm going to start a sample class on my computer back there with a little doc cam, and I'm going to log in as a student over there. I'm also going to text Jen Goliath, who's home at the moment, I'm going to say, hey Jen, why don't you join my class, and you can probably see her picture pop up on the screen too. I did invite you, if you want to log in on your own computer, do not feel like you have to, if you were to do that, you'd make sure you mute all your audios and turn off all your, your sounds so we don't get a lot of feedback. So let me start by starting this meeting and texting Jen real quick. I'm going to say, Jen, Jen, log in. Log.
While Mr. Hazel's doing that, I do want to just mention, I just seen that Jessica stepped out, Jessica introduced Derek. Jessica and the techs through BOSI's that we've utilized have been working non-stop to get this school district ready for the beginning of the school year, Jessica really has been the heart of that, I know Jeff has said that to me numerous times, you know, the, just the amount of work that she's been putting in to make this ready and to make us ready for it to be go, so thanks for all her hard work.
Thank you. Okay, so what you're looking at on the screen is what a kiddo would see at home. You see, I clicked on a little link, the students might get the link via Google Calendar, they might get it through a Google Classroom thing, they might get it any number of ways, okay, the point is it clicks the link, pops up, it might do a little install and it says, please wait the meeting host to let you in, I'm the meeting host, teacher chap, this is the meeting host, I'm going to walk over there, I'm going to let student chap in. When we walk over here, I'll show you a few examples of what the teachers can do to engage in live streaming with the kids at home at the same time as the kids in the class. So I'm going to let myself in here, I'm also going to let Jen in. So let's see here, let's get that block out of the way. We're not going to worry about audio and whatnot right now. Alright, so what you see on the screen is what the kid at home is going to see, they're going to see, it's a little washed out, but they're going to see a picture of themselves, but they're also going to see a picture of Jen, there's Jen right there. See if Jen can see me waving, yeah, she's waving back, so there's Jen at home. Again, we're not playing around with audio right now, okay? This first example is pretty straightforward, what the children at home are seeing, what you are seeing looking up there is my webcam on this computer. Nearly all of the computers at school do have webcams, and those that don't have a doc cam that's attached to it that can serve as a webcam, so let me demonstrate that too. So I'm going to share the screen, I'm going to share the content from this doc cam right here. What you're seeing now is the, is the video feed from the doc cam, now I promised I wouldn't, I promised Dan I wouldn't teach any math here tonight, but I'm going to put a picture of a conic section because I couldn't help myself. Circles, what you get of course when you slice a cone, straight across, it looks at an angle, grappling and so on, but the idea is that a math teacher or any teacher could take the notes that they already have, that they've been using for years, use a doc cam and stream this over the net to the kids at home, they could write on it, they could be talking and the microphone in the doc cam will pick them up and transmit that as well. This is the, this is the basic example that I shared with the teachers this past week, example, you don't necessarily need to get it to Star Trek level technology here, you can use what you've already created, you can adapt it here and there, but you can get the job done. I'm transmitting notes that I wrote 20 years ago for pre-calculus here, over the net via doc cam. Now, you don't have webcam in your computer there, I know this is going to look upside down because I'm not going to fiddle with the settings at the moment, but you can also project yourself if you really want to do that, I don't, so I'm going to put it right back there. Another thing I can do is instead of sharing an actual sheet of paper, I can share. Share. You can't see what I'm doing at the moment because the lid is, your kiddos can't see what's going on. I'm going to share a window. This happens to be a window of some notes that actually is the Hubble Space Telescope right there, which is pretty huge, but the point is it could be anything you want it could be, that could be a PowerPoint presentation, that could be a document, it could be a kid's student work, whatever you want. That actually talks about how when they first built the Hubble Space Telescope and shot it into space, they ground the lens wrong, so they had to send up a pair of glasses basically and stick it on the front of the Hubble Space Telescope so you can get good pictures. Say you want to share something else, I'll give you one more example, something that's kind of nifty. I credit Matt McCall at the high school for figuring this one out. We can actually share, let's see the last thing, I'll show it up. We can actually share your iPhone, or presumably your Android or whatever, one of the benefits to this isn't just that it's kind of neat, one of the benefits is because we have to abide by Education Law 2D and Part 121 laws, it's all about data privacy. We might not necessarily be able to buy 3,250 licenses of some fancy app, you don't get that by phone, but you get the points, okay? But if a teacher's got an app, there's absolutely no reason why you can't do something like this. So here we go, let's see, I tested this earlier today, again, nifty little feature. Let's see here, screen gearing. Alright, that's my phone. Where is this? That, right there, the nap on my phone that I don't have to, I don't have to worry about that law 2D, there's no student data privacy issues here, I'm simply sharing a nifty animation with the kids at home while I'm at work, that's what Jupiter will look like tonight if we could actually see it between the clouds, or, kind of interesting, another one. This is called a sky view or something, but the point is you can actually hold the phone up, this would be great in a science class, it'll tell you where you're looking depending on where you're holding the phone. Not quite as practical if the kid is home, obviously, because he doesn't know where you're holding the phone, but the point is, the sharing of your iPhone actually allows you to share some pretty nifty maps that we don't necessarily have to concern ourselves with student privacy because on your phone, and it's not asking for student data. What this shows you very basically is how you can take the work that you've already been doing for the past number of years, whether it's good old-fashioned lesson plans on paper, maybe you've got some Google Slides, some PowerPoints, maybe you've got some apps on your phone in your pocket that you like to play with and show the kids, whatever the case may be, the, the point is you don't have to really jump a high bar to stream this stuff to the kids at home. So, that's what I want to demonstrate here for you. Any questions about this kind of stuff?
Yeah, so did you buy Air Server and install it on all the teacher computers then to be able to do that with the iPhone?
Air Server.
So there has to be some AirPlay thing for a Windows machine then to receive the...
Yeah, I think there's some equivalent for, for Android phones or something to that thing.
I'm just kidding, because you can do that because it goes right to your Mac.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
You can't just have that go and work on a Windows laptop.
Yeah, well, it came up, the option came up the other day when we were playing around with it on the Chromebooks that the kids were using, so we'll certainly investigate that further enough. Anything else?
I would just, just add one thing, you know, and Mr. Hazel showed a number of things that, one of the, one of the things I put out to our staff the other day was a shared, you know, welcome message, and it was, I very intentionally made sure that I created the PowerPoint and then, you know, on my own, just very quickly typed in, how do you record on Zoom, and I was able to make that recording in Zoom and send it out, and it was very smooth, the, the sound quality was great, and I didn't, I didn't use a document cam, I used the actual camera on the computer, the sound on the computer, so the idea that, you know, I, I think, although it'll be something certainly for our teachers to get used to, being in front of a classroom there of, you know, the students who are live at first and the students who are joining you on the screen, it's certainly a learning process, you know, I, I pictured it with even just a computer on a podium, here I could see those students, I could be talking to the students who are at home, I could, as I shared the screen, the PowerPoint that's behind me is the same PowerPoint that everybody's seeing at home, so it was very easy for me to do, now I could do that live, or I could do that in a taped version, and so either way, and I think this is important, what, what families are going to see at home is, you, you're going to have some teachers who are going to say, you know, I'm going to flip my classroom, I'm going to tape my 43, 45-minute lesson, whatever it might be, and send that, they can watch that on their home day, on their asynchronous day, and when they come to, to me, I'll be talking with them about what that presentation was, or I may do it in a live version and they may be doing other work on their asynchronous day at home, you know, questions, essays, those sort of things. So, I think either way, it's going, it can be very effective and it'll certainly, there's certainly teacher discretion there with what they feel they're most comfortable with, and I would even say sometimes the type of content that you're teaching will drive how it is that you want to roll out those licenses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what's, how is our, how is our preparedness right now with technology?
Mr. Hazel?
At the elementary level? The elementary level, the classrooms are going to have a computer with a doc cam and projector. The doc cam is being used, has been used for the past number of years to project books up onto the wall, that sort of thing. The elementary level however is not live streaming as they're going every day. Virtual program at the elementary school, they are live streaming, so to speak. There's 12 of them, they have the computer, some sort of camera, doc cam, they don't have projector because it's a kids' classroom. Secondary level, they've got a computer, projector, doc cam, various models of that sort of building. The doc cams can dual serve the purpose as a webcam as well, they'll actually have two webcams in some cases. There's shipment of webcams that are coming today, possibly tomorrow, will be installed in the next couple of days. There's going to be two techs in district tomorrow, as you know, we have 2.0 FTE BOSI's techs from the district. Today we had one, tomorrow we have two, Friday we were able to steal a few from the other school district, so tomorrow, on Friday we'll actually have four, which is terrific. We're spending the rest of this week installing and setting up all those classrooms. We've had about a thousand requests for devices over the course of the past month, so they've been busy sending those out, and might even got calls, they've got those delivered, so I believe the elementary ones went out on Friday, secondary ones have been going out throughout the course of this week, there's even more internet hotspots that then are together this week today, and then I believe the, what do you call it, the cellular extenders that we're just preparing for are on their way as well.
If I could just add too, really important, and I know Mr. McDermott and I were talking for a moment before the meeting, and he just had asked a question about the delivery of some of the devices, and it's really important for them to understand, you know, last, I think it was March, maybe April, we put out something to the school community, said who needs device, who needs hotspots, we reacted to that and provided everyone with what they needed, we had those people actually keep those over the summer. We put out another one this summer, asking if there were, was an increase in need, and got a much higher response, we were, we filled those needs, since then we've had more people asking, okay? So, as you can imagine, in the last week or so, our technology specialists have really been working on making sure that our classrooms are set, so, you know, we've given the school community ample time to respond to, to, you know, what they need technology-wise, we're going to get those people who responded after the fact, devices, Wi-Fi, but it might be a little bit later, we need to make sure that our classrooms are ready to go first, so, and we did, we got some additional responses, in some cases families said, geez, I understand you're doing the, at the, at the secondary level, the students are going to be going through their classes and there's going to be live streaming, can we get another device? Okay, those, those are some of the requests that we're meeting after the fact as well. And, and just one more thing about the boosters, we had, we went around and made sure that the boosters would work at home, we picked different spots on Tusk Nation, made sure that the boosters worked, we went to place the order, all the boosters that we had selected were gone, so we, they had to find specs for another set of boosters, they've placed that order now, so once those get in, the Tusk Nation has actually worked with us, they are going, they have a group of people who are ready to install the second that they come in, for those families who need help with installation, so I think that was awesome, they were, they were willing to take that up.
Dan, who would be the best context for the people that they do have questions?
Great question, if there's still a technology need or anything like that, they should get ahold of their building principal, because what we want to make sure we do is that we keep all of that data housed initially at the building level, because that's where the commitment forms were returned to, so they're going to want to input that data right there, then it'll be passed on to the technology office.
Yeah, you want to continue with your...
Yeah, great, perfect. Okay, by the end of the week I'm going to send out a welcome message to our families so everybody can expect that, I must tell you this, certainly there's some trepidation with returning, I mean, throughout the nation, throughout, you know, our state, certainly right here in our district, there's people who are concerned, and I mentioned this in other meetings, people are all over the spectrum with this, right? They really are. We're going to be very cautious, especially to start this school year, we want, we want in-person instruction to continue as long as we can, so we're going to try to do everything we can to do it in a safe way. Going around to the buildings, I was able to get to four of them yesterday, just many, many people very excited to be able to come back, they can't wait to welcome kids back, they know it's going to be different, we all know it's going to be different, but they're certainly showing a great deal of excitement about coming back, and that certainly made me feel really good about where we're at right now. Mentioned earlier, something about the turf, please make sure that you stay off the turf until, until it's complete, during the day, there's, if they haven't finished all the lights, stand, do you know, are all the lights finished?
They're all, they're all... They're going to need a testing tomorrow.
Okay, so they're still, still doing some testing, it, it's, it's an active work zone still, when it's no longer an active work zone, believe me, we will share that with the school community, okay? Let, let's, let them finish the work so everybody's safe and then we can, we can open that up. The timeliness, timeliness of this is great, this project has been on time, really since three weeks in, they've been, they've been on time, and it's going to be really important for our physical education classes at the secondary level to start the year, to be able to be outside on that turf. One of the topics that's come up, and this is what I'm going to recommend right now to the board, I don't necessarily think, you know, they're requiring more action, but I want to tell you the way I want to proceed with this, and then if you have thoughts or questions... proceed with this and then if you have thoughts or questions, please let me know. A number of the districts in, in our county, and this was as a recommendation from the county health director, have talked about utilizing a number with regard to student attendance data. Something for us to look at to be kind of a cue for, geez, let's, we better get in touch with the health director because here's what our data is showing us, okay? Remember, we all know that the testing is taking five, seven, eight, 10 days at some times. So we won't know if we have a spike until too long afterwards, right? So what, what I'd like to recommend is this. In the event of increased student absences, such as a 5% variance from regular attendance trends, the district shall collaborate with the Niagara County Department of Health and then strongly consider alternative instructional methodologies. Now, that might mean that if we're in every day, that we go to every other day. That might mean if we're in hybrid, we go to completely remote, okay? We'll do that, this will just be one data point that we use, but we'll use that with the Niagara County Department of Health to see, okay, what are the trends that you're seeing in the area as well? It won't be the number that, you know, we're locked into that makes the decision. And let me say one more thing about that 5% daily attendance rate. What we did is we went back not to last year because last year's attendance data is of course not completely accurate, what's called fuzzy map. But the two years prior, we used those data percents for each of our buildings because the average daily attendance is different from building to building. And anytime we get a variance from that of 5%, 5% plus, that's when we'll get in touch with the county health department, say, what do you have going on? Okay, and then together we'll make some decisions. It could very well be a building by building decision, right? If we have high counts in one place but not another, and high, high or attendance rates at one building, not another, and that coincides with, yeah, you've had some positive tests there. Maybe that one school overloads, okay? We'll work with the health department on how long that should be. It could be two days for cleaning. It could be, you know, two weeks, but we'll work with them on that. Any questions on that, comments, thoughts?
So you want to recommend 5% above the normal data for the last two years?
Correct. In other words, if we're, if we're 5% below what our attendance rate is, what our usual daily attendance rate is, average yearly daily attendance rate is for a particular school, then we would use that as a, as one measure to then work with.
Just, because I know we discussed this the other night, I just want it to be discussed here in public, is they have yet to change the and to or for attendance. We just want to explain again what the ramifications that is and explain what that is, if maybe some people don't realize that.
Yeah, absolutely. So as it stands right now in our county, if a student goes out with symptoms, the expectation, COVID symptoms, the expectation is that they would need to return, to return, they would need a negative COVID test. They would need a note from a doctor and they'd need to be out for 14 days. Right now, it is and, okay? In some counties, in New York State, that and has become an or. The CDC guidelines, it's an or. In other words, all you would need is a doctor's note saying you can come back. And here's the practical example. You know, a student who has allergies and their allergies are acting up and the doctor knows they have allergies, they didn't have a fever, but they had shortness of breath. That's one of the many symptoms for COVID. And the doctor says, this isn't COVID, this is their allergies, this is their allergy season for them. And they, so they, it's not COVID. They write a note, right now, because there's an and there, if they don't have the negative COVID test, they can't come back. So we've been expecting now that language to potentially change. It's been talked about at the New York State Department of Health. There's been a meeting with the New York State Department of Health and the county health directors in which I would like to say they were all expecting this change to take place. The Department of Health has not made this change yet. The ramifications of that, maybe I just laid out for you a little bit, is that every time somebody goes home, and let's face it, our nurses are going to play this very tight to the bass. If they have any of these symptoms, they're going to say, they have a symptom. So now they have a symptom, now that means they need the and, all those things to come back. It could lead to students being out for a significant amount of time. And, you know, some, some parents may be able to get a hold of their doctor. The doctors say, absolutely, okay, come on in, here you go. Others may not. So we could have many students who are then sitting out. It just from the start, it wasn't practical to us. I know, I think that's why the CDC guidelines are what they are. If it's the rules that we have to live by, we're going to live by them to start the school year. But I think it certainly will have an impact on, you know, students, student attendance data.
And Dan, does that count the people that say their child, they keep home sick?
So, so we would be looking at students who are ill. If, if somebody keeps their, their child home sick and reports that it was something that was a COVID symptom, you know, something like that, then yes, if, most of these students are going to be the ones who we send home, okay? But what the data that we'll use for the 5%, well, anybody, will be any student who's been marked ill, absent. If they're absent for some other reason, college visit, if you can do more than virtual visits. But, you know, if, when any, you know, college visits, those sort of things, if they leave, those, those won't count against the student attendance that we'll use for our other data.
But I think Bob's question is, if a parent says, hey, you know, my son's not feeling well today, keeps him home, does the four, ten days and the?
Only if it was deemed a symptom, you know. So if they call in, they talk to the nurse and they say, here's what it, you know, here, here's the condition, then potentially, yes.
Say, let's say they call and say, my son, they got allergies or whatever.
No, if they had allergies, that wouldn't, if they call, if a parent calls in the kid's sick because they had allergies, that student wouldn't have to sit out for 14 days.
Now, if that student came in, you know, the parent said they had allergies and the nurse felt to go home because they're coughing a lot and everything, that turns into a different story. And that's, this is our discussion the other night, now we're putting our nurses against the parent's discretion of their child.
And, and like I said, you know, I said the nurses, rightfully so, and in their meeting with the Department of Health, they're going to look at those symptoms as they're listed. And if you have them, that's going to be how we identify it, right?
It's the only way they can.
That's exactly right.
They have to protect the population outside.
Hundred, hundred percent.
Even a parent could be upset.
And say, do we have factors that means key this data? You have a student that's sent home, is there a scenario, he's out for 14 days and then there's another one out for 14 days? Now we've got 10 kids from two classrooms out 14 days, but none of them test positive. But we still are counting those as absences.
I'm, I'm loving your scenario there because if they tested, if they didn't test positive, so that means they tested, they tested negative and the doctor writes, no, they get to come back and they'll stop counting against their data. But I think if you flip that a little bit and say that their test still hasn't come back and it's day 10 and you have a lot of kids who are, who are waiting, that's an issue. Absolutely, Dan.
You know, the data is all over the place. I know a nurse practitioner, she works in Memorial.
Hey, Rick, Mike.
The data is all over the place. I know a nurse practitioner, she works in Memorial. She got COVID-19. So they kept her out for over two weeks. She tested again, she still tested positive, but it's, it's not catching a mark, so they allow her back to work. And yet it's still testing positive.
And, and I would tell you that that is part of it and we've, and Tom has worked very closely with the, with the health department. They've been great and I think we're, I think we're ready for all of this because we, we know that. And, you know, all those are the pieces that we're going to be working with. We've had test cases over the summer that we've been, that we've worked through. It's all about capacity, right? Capacity for testing, capacity for contact tracing. And, you know, what point, if, if there is a significant surge, at what point does that levy break? If so, we're ready for that too. We have a regular program, we can shift from, you know, three different models within that program. We'll be ready. Any, any other questions on that piece? Is, is everybody comfortable with us using that as a measure? I mean, again, it'll be one measure, but that's all we use. Okay. Just some, some reminders regarding reopening. Our reopening day is Tuesday, September 8th. The elementary students who are part of the regular program will be coming back hybrid every other day through September 22nd. And on September 23rd, our elementary students will transition to, who are in the regular program, will transition to fall in person. The elementary who are completely virtual will begin, of course, virtual, we're made that way. I know there's been some questions, I think we've clarified this, but there wouldn't be any orientations, there wouldn't be anything like, there would be no reason for a student, student who was virtual to come in. Doesn't mean they couldn't, it just means there would be no reason that we would be, you know, having them. As far as the secondary program, the, the regular secondary program, it's going to be completely remote from the start. And then on September 23rd, it will transition to hybrid. The, all the students who are part of the virtual program will also be virtual to start and they will be on as part of that AB group, they will be part of a group and are part of a group as well, okay?
Can you, some of the parents are, I think, a little concerned, confused about what the virtual program is going to actually look like. Because I think a lot of them have heard things out there where they're, they think that kids are going to be online with their teachers every day, why? So can you just say, like, if they have, let's say I have a virtual student, you know, explain to me exactly what the week is going to look like for my child?
Let, let me separate elementary and secondary here, okay? So for, for a secondary student, they will be joining the classroom every other day. So if they're, think of it this way, if they're an A student, if they're academically, of course, okay? But if they're in the A group, they will join a classroom on the A days, which are the same days that the students who are coming into school, once they start coming back, that are coming in on the A days, okay? So during that 40-minute period, okay, if you're the first period of the day starts at, Mr. Coin, 7:50, something like that?
7:56.
Okay, 7:56. So if, if your class starts at 7:56 and you're a virtual student, you're going to be joining from home on your A day with that class, with the kids who are there at 7:56 in person. Then you'll transition to your second period class if you're virtual, then your third period class on your A day. Okay, on the day that you're in with your group. On the next day, you'll be doing asynchronous learning. So we talked about the different modes that the teachers may use. The day that they're joining, it could be questions about what was sent on video that was a flipped lesson from the day before. Or it could be live teaching and on the next day, you're doing the assignments, you're writing your essay, you're doing practice problems during that same time period. On the day that you're virtual, that you're not in class, there's not a requirement that at 7:56 you're joining that particular classroom on the day that you're not in school, okay? So that's, that's secondary.
So, so those teachers then, the students shouldn't expect possibly to see any video, live video, their teacher or their class that day?
On the second day. That is correct. That is correct. On live, correct. Although again, like if it was a flipped classroom model, it would be something that could be said.
Correct.
Yeah. For the elementary, it's a separate virtual model, okay? We, we are not putting elementary students in front of a camera or at home for six and a half hours a day. It doesn't make any sense. So it's a mix, every day, every day they're going to get some in, they're going to get some, I was going to say a person, some virtual live synchronous learning and then blocks of asynchronous on all of their days, okay? Any other questions on that?
So there's no expectations in the teachers to reaching out on the, the virtual days, the non-live streaming days to be live streaming?
That, that is correct.
So parents should know that, that, hey, my teacher may not.
Absolutely, on that, on the, on the second day, that's absolutely right. Thank you. Next, with reopening. I've said it before, the, the, the community was so responsive with the surveys, with the commitment forms. You know, we, we had, it's a percentage, very little reaching out that we had to do. But we, it's important for me to say, you, you need to honor those commitments. We're expecting everybody to. We're not moving people in the first 10 weeks from virtual to, to the regular program. We can't, we've set these classes with those numbers in mind, okay? That said, probably about four or five weeks, we're going to, we have a date on the calendar already to revisit all of this. We will probably in about seven weeks send something out to people and say, what do you want to do for the next 10 weeks? Now, it's really important, and we said this initially when we put out the first commitment form, that, that data from our community would determine what we can do, okay? So there's two things that I want everybody to understand for the remainder of the year. If we had a large number of people who said, and this would be a great potential problem, if people said, I want to go from virtual, I want to be back in virtual, or I'll be hybrid. At the elementary level, that would be a problem potentially for us, depending on the number who wanted to come back. And it could potentially force us to do what many other districts are doing, and that is go to a hybrid. Because we would just, the numbers would be too high for us to, we were fortunate as a district to have space to move teachers. But if our numbers get too, we wouldn't be able to do that after 10 weeks if there was a large percentage of people said they wanted to come back. So that, that's number one. Two, and thank you, thank you, thank you, please don't change this, it's really focusing on elementary again. Parents who said, families who said that they could transport. The ability to transport your children to our schools this fall, and I'm speaking again particularly to elementary, has made it so that we can do what we're doing. We wouldn't be able to do every day if all of a sudden anybody said, no, you need to drive. We wouldn't have the bus to drive all those kids in, okay? So all of the things that we're doing together is what's making this possible. But, you know, if there's a variance, and I'm not telling people that they shouldn't, they're going to have an opportunity to make a decision. And then we'll use again that data to inform our decisions, okay? Again, good news, I look at it this way, we, we have a plan, we have a model in the regular program where we can transition from all in person to hybrid to completely virtual. We know which one we prefer, okay? But we have the ability to transition. So that, that's really important. I know I spoke with the board a little bit about this before, and it was actually a conversation piece the other night a little bit for some of the school districts who were, who were in the same vote when we met with the presidents and superintendents. Any questions on that or comments?
Just that, when we revisit it, I, I really think that we should do our best to not move away from everyday, you know, going to a hybrid for elementary. You know, if, as it gets closer to there, seeing how, what the movement is, I think we might want to just say, hey, listen, you know, we cannot affect the two-thirds of the families, or even almost 80% of the families whose kids are coming live every single day to school for in-person education, for a few that want to come back out of the hybrid model. So it's, again, I, I just want that to be out there, that's something we have to have a really good discussion about changing that much and impacting that many families by just, you know, depending on if it's a smaller number that wants to come in.
On the same topic, what is the number of transfers you get into the district in a given year? What do you do with that volleyball?
That's, that's a great question and I, every year, that's a very fluid number, right? Both those coming in and those going out. So class sizes are always changing at the beginning of the year. And it's always an issue, you know, right? It's always something that we're, that you're plugging into your schedules and changing. This year, that is, is made it so much more complicated, right? And something as simple as this, if we do, in our district office, the Margaret Beebe, who does almost all this work, and thank you for her great work, she does all of her ads at one time, it could look like we're, oh, what just happened to our third grade, right? Then later in the afternoon, she starts taking out the, the students, okay, there goes down, there goes the numbers down back down for third grade. And that is kind of, the volleyball, it's a great example, right? It's, it's just, it's constantly up and down right now. So we're actually. So, we're actually meeting tomorrow morning to talk about a couple of our grade levels, particularly with the, with the virtual. So, one, one in particular, but two of them. So it's, just, it's constantly more.
So there's limitations, really, what the number of students are going to be able to do that, right?
Well...
So you may get to that point.
Well, and these, and, and important, that these are all people who are just registering for our district.
Right.
They've moved in, they were where we live in here, maybe late registers, so, you know, that, it's that population, obviously, we have to give them the same option when they come to the door, right? So, yeah, that's made it, another interesting part of this. Okay. Huge thank you to Kathy Hochul, Lieutenant Governor, her office. We were in a really tough spot this morning, and, and it was this, our students on the Tusco Nation, their transportation isn't done by our district, okay, it's done by an outside contractor. That contract isn't between our district and that contractor. That contract is between New York State, New York State Education Department, and the contractor. That contract wasn't done, it wasn't ready. And we've been pushing on this for a little bit, to really no success. As late as Monday, we were, the Education Department told us that it was sitting on the desk in the Division of Budget, and they weren't going to move, they weren't moving forward on it, because they were told not to move forward. And the Education Department explained, no, 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 this is about getting kids to school. Oh, okay, okay. Well, it was Wednesday morning, today, and we still hadn't heard anything. I placed a phone call to Lieutenant Governor's office, and it was within two hours, I want to say it was even closer, just a little over an hour. We had something, an email in place from Dan Fuller, who is the Secretary of Education for the Governor's Office, saying it's approved. And, so I want to thank her, her office, I know also, we sent something out to Senator Orr, I don't know if he even was able to contact them in that amount of time, but if he did, I thank him as well, he's certainly been instrumental with some other contracts with New York State, so, just a, just really a huge thank you for them stepping up and helping us out, it was, it was really important and we needed it to happen. Now they can start working on those routes, think about this, our, thank goodness, there's a small number of students who are being transported, we've been working on our bus routes now since the last data that we brought in, right, since our commitment forms. Today, this afternoon, they're working on those routes now with, with Transpo, which is the company who's going to be working, doing the transportation. As far as our transportation, our elementary runs are complete, they all worked, we thought the map would work, we're able to transport all of our students, even when we get to September 23rd, when we have the, our students all in person who are coming. So that's exciting, our, we're also able to transport our students who are in the Moses program regardless of time of day, so I know there were certainly some parents who were, were concerned about that, that's going to be able to happen, so that is exciting as well. We, they are now, they've now turned their attention to running, to doing the other secondary runs, because our secondary students aren't coming until 23rd, they'll be working on that the rest of this week, and probably the next week. So you'll, you'll get your calls after that, once, once those routes are complete. Any questions on transportation? Food service, we found out, beginning this weekend or last week, that the food service, our food service is able to offer free meals for all students until December 31st, unless other action is taken. So I want everybody to hear that. Every child in our district is able to get a free breakfast and lunch every day, even if they're virtual, even if they're hybrid, on those, if they're a virtual student or a hybrid student, a survey was put out by our food service program, just need to answer that, that you'd like to come for those meals, we will do it the way we did it last year, it'll be here at the high school, they'll drive underneath the bridge, they'll be able to pick up and grab and go, breakfast and lunch, okay? It's, it's, I think a very exciting thing that we're able to provide that free, we were absolutely going to be doing that anyway for our free and reduced, for students who had free and reduced meals, because that was the expectation. Did I say December 31st? Okay, if I didn't, December, until December 31st. There may be action that extends that through, through the rest of the year, but right now it'll be until December 31st. If they don't extend it, it wouldn't be available for our students who have free and reduced lunch after that day, okay? But right now, it's available to all of our students, and the district is compensated at the, at that, at the full free breakfast, lunch rate for every meal that is taken, okay?
Is that state or federal?
The money comes from the federal government and then is funneled through the state, part of the federal free and reduced lunch program and that, but that money that goes to the state.
There were two questions that came to me about that, after that announcement went out, it looks like, one, is it the same, as though that, is it the same offerings as what we would have been offering for selections in the school?
I don't know if they put that menu together, I'm going to guess it's going to look for the, for the grab and go, it's going to look a lot like it did at the end of, like, last spring.
They're asking for students in attendance, like, you know, when they go to the, what's it going to look like?
Yeah, no, the students who are in attendance, they're going to go through the line like they normally would, difference is, it's not buffet, they don't reach and grab anything, everything's going to be served to them, you know, they're going to, their lunches are going to look like they normally would when they're here.
Okay. And then, some of the parents had already paid because they knew that the free, the, the re, yeah, the school bucks was going to take out of their account, or some of them just wouldn't put money on there, they wouldn't know, like, what...
Yeah, I would imagine that that money can stay there, and then wait, is my, my guess, we'll find out.
Definitely, it can stay, it can stay on the count, and then they can always use it after December 31st, with three meals since.
And, and I think if you took, if you took that out further, if it's a senior, we get to the end of the year and they can extend it, I don't know, we'll have to find out what you would do with, like, a refund or something like that.
And I'm going to assume there's still, like, snacks available that they can purchase with families.
Okay, yeah, especially at the secondary level.
Right.
We can find out if, if this is extended, now, what they would do.
Good question.
Let's see, so, okay, that, that wraps up food service, any other questions on food service? Pre-K, we talked about this before, pre-K is one of the items being deuced right now, or let's say, the money's being held, okay, it's on hold, the, and it's at 20%, so, we did say last, at the last meeting, we will have to make a determination on that at some point here, and we said we'd probably do that around the 10-week, about what we would do, or maybe before, about what we would do for the second semester, if that 20% isn't here, because again, we never had any intention of paying for that pre-K, but we, we didn't, and I think wisely, you know, and thank you, or, we said we're going to start the school year, it certainly wasn't fair to families, but if we get a number of weeks in here and that doesn't change, you know, families may need to look that second semester for childcare, if pre-K funding is cut by that 20%.
Couple of questions about that. One, you know, I, I, again, we championed this, we're trying to get this to come to our district after years of not having that grant money come in. I, I think it's doing us a disservice by not providing that in some form, like, offering maybe something that asks, you know, where we just don't cut it off totally, but are we able to say, hey, we got it cut by 20%, can that be with, can that fluctuate with the tuition that parents can pay then? Instead of finding childcare, it's going to be probably a lot cheaper for them to pay for that, make up the 20% difference out of their pocket, the bunny bunch, as opposed to us going in and saying, hey, sorry, we're shutting it down, good luck trying, trying childcare, by the way, you could pay the full amount to the bunny bunch.
It's a, it's a, it's a good idea, I wonder, and we'll, we'll have to ask this question, I wonder if there would be an issue with, if some kids couldn't afford it, but others could, because it was a part of this universal pre-K grant. But that's, I mean, these are obviously incredibly unusual times, so I think it's an outside the box idea that we should certainly could look into, so, Alice, if you could just make it known that, and let's see what the, if, if we would be able to, if families would be able to supplement that. I think that would be great for, potentially great for a lot of people, it'd be great for the stu, for the, for the students, for the families, also for the bunny bunch, quite greatly, so for, for one of the, you know, local businesses, that's a good idea.
Because I know I talked to one of the parents, we said what their cost was for last year sending them, you know, to non-bunny, it wasn't bunny bunch, because it wasn't, you know, they weren't in that age bracket yet to get their child in there for pre, and it was a, you know, preschool, you know, program, and it was about four grand for the year.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I mean, if we could, if it's a supplement basically like this, where you're, you're going to pay a, you know, lower reduced tuition, we're going to help, you know, or if we can, I, I know Alice is a miracle worker, so I mean, you know, she can figure that out.
It's all yours.
Lot of pressure, I don't know.
All of that would be a lot easier if this was the only thing that 20% was hitting, you know?
Oh, I agree.
I know, I know. You said two questions, did you have another one?
No, I was sort of tied together.
Tied together?
Yeah.
That, that's all I have.
Any questions for Superintendent Asreport? All right. I do for board discussion. Anything we want to bring up to discuss? Well, one thing for planning-wise, I know that the, you should have got the newsletter in the mail today from NISBA, and it's the virtual convention preview guide and stuff, we need to start selecting what we're going to do, how we're going to do that and everything, so, if you guys wanted, you know, to do that.
And I, and I would just say, if there's an interest, if, if I, I think everybody gave...
The only people, Bob, I don't know if you were planning, or Jason, everybody else was...
Didn't you say, I think you were one of the ones that said last meeting, you want to do it eventually?
You said no?
Do the virtual, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to find out.
Okay.
It's, what's the dates?
Well, so...
So it was October, 20, was the 21st and 22nd, and then it was the 27th, I believe, to the 29th, and then they had just the, the meeting for that last day.
And if I could just add, if the group chose to slide, if we chose to select the same classes, same sessions, we could certainly do that here and put it out on the big screen.
Screens. Would they look at that idea to do that? Then it could, you know, you could have a board retreat. Without Jason, he's not going to come.
Tomorrow morning, can I just ask you to throw a point, somebody come on, to make sure that we reserve it for those days, reserve the ALC for those days?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. Any other buttons for board discussion? Any old business this time? Any new business, and I, I know I asked you a question earlier, but I prefer to, Superintendent, can you just give a little update on the sports and where that stands right now?
Yeah, I'd love to, as of right now, we're moving forward with the idea that sports will start on September 21st, but there's certainly many things that need to be worked out, from what levels all the districts are able to offer, to, you know, all the different safety protocols that need to be put in place, on top of what's already included in both the 145-page NISA document and the Department of Health document, right? So those things are all really important, but it, it, right now, it looks as though those sports that have been considered to be low to moderate risk are all, you know, would all be able to start practices and competition, and those that are high-risk will be able to start with practices, potentially, and then the idea being that it will be a month afterwards, where they can potentially transition into competition. That's where we're at, the, the good news is this, I guess only at COVID times, we say there's a lot of time, but there's a lot of time before the 21st, if we're saying that, when it comes to planning, but we, but by the end of the week, I think we'll have some guidance, some additional guidance on that. One of the things that certainly ties in is this, the 20% reduction. So a lot of districts, as we met the other night with the superintendent, the board presidents, the, the concern for some districts certainly was, hey, we're staring down this 20% reduction and we're, and athletics, and, you know, there wasn't a person sitting in this room the other night who wasn't in favor of athletics, it was just, you know, we know that we're already struggling, but we're trying to pull this off too. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts here.
And I know that from the board presidents, there was a very, how much in, in the level of sports that was offered is really what the discrepancy piece was, we had some that were, it was not just sports, but if we're going to do sports, it has to be musicals and, you know, all of the curriculars and everything else should be going on too, not just, you know, sports. And I, I was, I laughed at it, because one of the board presidents tied it to Title IX, but for, you know, activities. So, you know, it wasn't just, you know, we're not discriminating because of, because of sex, we're discriminating because of, what, the activity of sports versus your clubs. I know that myself and some of the, and a couple of other board presidents were like, if we're going to do sports, it has to be all levels. I convey that to you, to probably take that message back, we want to meet there, but, you know, we, you're, you can't, again, now you're going to be in more, you know, exclusive area on that piece, it has to be all levels. You know, we look at that, I mean, we have the cross-country team, which is all levels, you know, we're going, there's a large portion there. My concern is, is that you take out that modified level, now we have to arrange dates for kids to be taking the test to go and possibly play JV, and your JV numbers are shooting up, because you're going to possibly take more kids up on there, and the discussion, you know, so, you know, let's, and the other aspect of that was, we have all, if we had all three levels modified, JV and varsity here, it's either we can have a controlled environment with them playing, and do all the social distancing guidelines and limit the, the, the amount of contact with each other and with the, with the parents that come for the spectators, or these private, you know, groups, sports plaques in the other indoor facilities are going to go and not necessarily follow all the social guidelines and safety protocols, and then we're having that, the intermixing of not just our kids, but kids that are not in continuous counties, and are outside the area coming in to play, and, I mean, I, I'm already worrying, because I looked at my class roster and I could see how many kids are in travel hockey. And I know travel hockey rules that just came out is that they, they can travel, they can't play in New York State, but they got the green light to go travel outside of New York State to play, you know, so, I, I just can imagine how many things those kids are not going to be able to come back to school because of things, so it's, I, I think it'd be better for us to have a controlled environment for sports than, you know, just force parents and kids to go elsewhere to do that, if, if sports are going to be on.
If, if you can see it before it's gone, and you can look out that window right there, you're going to take a look at that sunset, if you can see it. All right, yeah. It's super cool, I was looking at Steve.
What's that?
Look at that, look at that. Sorry.
ADD's coming out.
No, but look at that, I'm not usually, I am not usually impressed by sunsets, and that is just incredible.
Dan has been getting out worse.
The thing is, if there's 20%, that doesn't go away, we're going to have to have some serious discussions and prioritizing what we, why, what is the most valuable to all the students and staff? You know, I, it's going to be like it was 10 years ago, actually, it could be worse.
Right, oh, I totally agree, it's going to be much worse.
So...
And, and that, you're, you're saying that was echoed by some of the superintendent board presidents there, and you say, we're, we're here talking about sports, and we're cutting, we're, we're not going to be able to possibly pre-K? Where is our priorities lying? And so that was, that was also discussed and brought up there.
Is that something we can look at, how, what timeframe we can look at that?
Yeah, the thing is, we, we talked earlier, you know, and at, at the, we want to make, start making decisions at the, by the 10-week mark, so, we'll, we will put together a list, we'll first put together the number, what does 20% cut mean across the board? What does 20% cut mean across the board? What is that dollar amount? And then what does that mean as far as, you know, program, you know, equipment supplies, you know, all those things? What, what are we looking at here? I have to say, and I know I said it last time a number of times. Please, 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 if you're out there, reach out to your federal legislators, please. They are the ones, they're the only ones who can act on this legislation to send more money to our state. And, you know, I, they, our governor's made it very clear that without that funding, that we are looking at a reduction, whether that's 20%, 10%, 50%, whatever it might be, it's a reduction. And the only way to, to pluck that all is for that, those federal monies to come in.
Any other new business this time? So I was gonna ask you, so, all right, is there any other areas concerned with reopening right now that you foresee being an issue? You know, what's, what are your areas that you're most worried about right now working?
I think it's about, and again, I just have great faith in, in our school community, but it's about patience, flexibility. It's, um, we're starting a year knowing that it's far from what we in education consider to be the perfect learning environment. It's just not that. So to me, it's everybody just realizing that together and that we'll, we'll get through. We're gonna provide, I know our teachers will, the absolute best classroom experience as they can. Our cleaners are gonna do their absolute best when it comes to cleaning. Our labors are working to get everything set up. I mean, there's, there's so much really great work. I feel very comfortable that we're going to be ready in those areas. The, you know, the PPE, you know, the, all those things, I think we're, we're in a good place. But I think it's the unknown. It's at what time, when are we going to be facing, you know, some significant COVID cases? And how will we react, right? I, I think, I, I know I said this before, we're going to have cases. Right? With 34, 3,400 students in our district. Okay? That's just students. Add to that, you know, 600 plus staff members. We're going to have cases. And we just have to accept that's what, where we're at. Remember the families who were much more sensitive to that, certainly had the opportunity to choose virtual. People that are coming back need to know that they're gonna get a call at some point that says, uh, there was a case in your child's class, probably from the health department where it'll start, and there'll be contact tracing. And that's going to be the world that we're gonna be living on here for a year. And if, um, numbers get too high or it's something that can't be handled, handled, the tolerance isn't there for all of that, then, you know, our, our backup plan, which is part of our plan, is, you know, everybody being home and this being a remote learning environment for extended periods of time or for the remainder of the year, depending on where we land. But, you know, we're, we're ready for all of those different levels.
Anyone else to go to the order number four?
I did. I, I've been thinking about this for about a week or so. I did write something down. First, I'd like to give my gratitude to the administration, the teachers and all the supporting staff that continually work and every day to change, with changing variables to make the most normal learning experience for our students. Secondly, to the parents. Two of the most important variables are our children and our parents, right? So just as you get your child ready for the beginning of a new learning school year, this year brings a new challenge that your child will also need to be prepared for while they're in school, allowing us to have in-person learning. Though I'm sure most of the parents have talked to their children and for that really I thank you because that needs to be done. But what's gonna take, um, this year, it's gonna take everyone, not just a few, this is gonna take everybody working together to help in-person learning work. It's not gonna be a single thing, it's gonna take everybody. While we start the new year quickly approaching, I encourage all to talk to their children about face masks. Not just to wear them, but why they're wearing them. And, and why they should, and they should really start with that right now. Get them comfortable with wearing them. Also, let them know what's gonna happen in school. They're gonna be six foot apart while they're learning. This is some of the kids, I have a granddaughter that's going into kindergarten. And she pretty much knows what's gonna happen. So, and these kids can understand what's going on if you explain it to them. So talk to your child, make sure that they understand what's going on. And most of all, the big one is if your child's sick, please don't send them to school. That's the big one. So as you asked the district, you know, what the district can do for you by talking to your teachers and principals, I like to ask you to ask yourself what you can do for the district to help us keep in learning, uh, person learning working. Thanks.
Any other board member comments?
Yes, wanna say real quick, kind of feels like we're running a new frontier of education here. Really appreciate Jeff coming out and giving us a little demo of that, you know, look. On the bright side, there must be some cool aspects to, to this that weren't there before. But I think just as a community, to neutralize for everybody, with so long as, you know, we try to make the best plan that we can do, but even in that, you know, there's gonna be issues. There's gonna be things that we didn't foresee. So as a community, just, you know, graciously bring things to our attention and we'll do our best to, uh, to remedy. And thanks for all the taxpayer that, that hit doors just recently.
Yeah, Steve, it's just like, you know, to see, to see what we're talking about, the constant changes and the big ifs and whats. And I gotta, you know, thank you, Dan, your team, the staff, to come up with such detailed plans for 4,000 students and staff. And hitting the little things that we don't see. Two hours on the phone trying to correct the busing problem that no one sees. And when you're dealing with Albany, sometimes you don't know if you're gonna get a phone call back. And fortunately, they did react within an hour or two. But I wanna thank yous for that. And, uh, and I also wanna welcome, congratulate Amanda, Kristen and Darren. And, uh, good luck to the both three of us.
Thank you.
You said probably a new frontier of things. Expectations from parents are gonna have to change for, in, in certain regards also. Not necessarily for the quality of instruction, but for the fact that, you know, if a teacher's absent, we're major teacher shorts right now. There may not be someone there that's going to be going on camera and doing the virtual class that day. You know, there may not be someone in the school teaching that day and kids might be moved somewhere else for that, for that period. They have to, they have to realize that. And I, I just know, I've talked to other board presidents across, not just Niagara County, but Erie County, trying to find new, I, I thank you for coming to our district and, you know, taking positions because there are people right now turning jobs down positions once they hear the change in education. They, a lot, a lot of teachers, young teachers especially, are realizing they're not ready for their first teaching experience to be this. So there, you know, a lot of people have gotten offers for jobs and you might have, you experienced that too. It's just called up and said, hey, listen, I'm not ready for this. I'm, you know, gotta turn it down. You know, it, it, this is changing, trust me, the older teachers too. And, you know, this is my 26th year coming up in, in teaching and you're even older. So it's, it's, it's new for us. And I, I thought that after, you know, after 25 years, we've seen mostly everything. No, it's not happening, you know, now. It's, there's, there's even things that surprise me. So, you know, it's definitely a new environment. Technology wise, you gotta remember, everything can fall apart with the, you know, the hitting of a tree and our network going down. You know, trees going down with wind, we, you know how our weather is around here? We might lose a network. We might lose, you know, power for the, for the district and that's gonna change. It's before we could operate it for a couple of hours without power in the district and do whatever we could. It's not gonna work that well now when you have people at home learning, you know? So, um, you know, patience, that's, that's the key thing. And I, I liked, um, one of our administrators in our district said, you know, the very first thing that parents have to realize is safety is the first thing right now with their kids. Keeping everyone healthy, you know? And then learning patience. And, you know, down towards the bottom, that's where the education piece comes in right now. Because, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of learning going on right now for the technology pieces, especially new things coming in, new pieces of technology and things that are ever-changing. You know, look at what you did last, you know, was it a week and a half ago? We were set to go with Google Meet and have that as a platform. And then you tested it and saw things you didn't like. And, you know, in a week and a half, we're now Zoom school when it comes to our, you know, things change that fast. So, you know, I'm hoping parents understand also, I know that many people go on the, the Mr. Steve's Facebook page and ask questions and everything and realize that you gotta contact the school is the best place to go for answers. Call the superintendent's office, call your village principal, and that's, that's the best place for answers. And I, I know that, and we had an overwhelming number of people and, you know, I sat, I sat there in the parking lot and talked with Allison and Dan and Darren when we were, we were waiting for the results to be counted for the vote. And we were thinking, you know, 50% of the board presidents across the state thought their budgets were gonna go down. And here it was quite the opposite where it was resounding. And, you know, we saw that we had a majority, I mean, overwhelming majority approved, you know, approved our budget. I know a lot of people ask questions about, you know, what, what about all the money from, all the money from when we were closed? And we have to explain to them, no, there's not a tax rebate coming, there's not money coming back because we were open. It was simply the buildings were closed, learning was going on, lunches were going out, people were working, people were being paid. And the Federal Cares Act stipulated in, in section 186 on there that in order for us to continue to receive funding and for our community to receive CARES Act funds, a stimulus check, we have to continue to pay teachers and, I like, it was teachers, support staff, even in bus drivers and bus contracts, their, their pay. And so, you know, that means that we are paying and spending, spending our expenditure budget just as we were planning on that happening. So there is not this major pot of money that is saved because our buildings are closed. So that message needs to be, you know, reinforced with a lot of people in the public because that was.
And not only that, it's costing us more money to even try to do this now.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, we weren't expecting to have like 40,000 in PPE and equipment and everything to start the school year for, for this. I mean, that's, you know, but so people have to understand that. And I hope that, you know, and understand with people who don't have kids in the school and they never had kids in the school and they live in the community. You know, that, that question comes up constantly. I know Mike Lee and I talked about this when he first got, you know, got elected there. And what do you say to those people who, you know, I have kids in school and pay taxes? You have to remember in the New York State Constitution, it says that we will provide a free and appropriate, um, uh, public education for our, all members of the community, uh, members of the state. And that is why people still pay their taxes and even though they don't have kids in the school. So just that, I think that people have to realize and remember that that still exists in, in the state. And it's, I know that, that's, and I, I think you've talked to a couple of the superintendents from other districts where they're, are completely virtual and everything. And that's a big thing with their board, their, their boards that are being talked to by the public. Hey, you're completely virtual. So it should cost less to educate people right now who we get money back on our taxes. It's still costing us the same right now. You know, until, you know, you have the reduction and have to find money elsewhere to continue to pay them, so. All right, um, anything else? Any other board member comments? All right, um, our next meeting is 16. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To move in second. All those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
All sustaining, motion carries, we are adjourned.